I think it's something that's done in the past. Yeah. I hope this lawsuit didn't change the situation. That was due to go outside. I mean, I think there's a lot of things. I don't want to carry everybody. Yeah. Everybody's on the never. I mean, there's been a right side of the period. Excellent. I'm wondering if they can. Yeah. Well, yeah, they're really doing this cool. That's all the whole, you know, movies and stuff. That's that was actually. Actually, it's not a lot of me. I'm not. Hey, that's exactly what we made. Maybe it's just rare. And then we. So I'm looking at the. You know, it's on the mission. It's still not one of them. It's happened to all the rest of us. Can I just share? No, we should. My number is. Nobody else. Just stay just there. You didn't come? Yeah. Yes. Your mom. Your mom. It's true. Yeah. Let's. So nobody can guess what that is. It's a four year. Like, I mean, you know, it's your right. I don't do them because it's bad. It's a line. Yeah. Not sure that everyone. I mean. Yeah. Um. They answered. There's. Yeah. I've got names in my. I resolved. It's real.
He is online. Okay. And Tom said that he would be online as well. Oh, okay. But he's not locked off yet.
Okay.
But he's.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council this June fourth, twenty twenty four. Beginning our meeting at four thirty one P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have Councilman Fitzie Amanu on virtually with us. And at the table, we have Councilman Norfeldt, Councilman Redstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Christensen, myself. Councilman Hune may be joining us electronically as well. We'll watch for that. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely and our city recorder, Ms. Kamen. We have our minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. I'll turn those to the council for discussion or emotion.
Vote to approve the minutes from May twenty eight.
Second. Thank you. Have a motion a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand approved. Um, we have tonight's agenda. We have two different changes on our regular meeting. Our first one is the budget opening. And I didn't know if Mr. Welch wanted to come up and address what the changes were, if there are any. It's the winter overflow shelter.
Yeah. I can certainly do that.
The budget openings are pre routine, but there is just one update on it.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, Jim Welch, Finance Director. There was one change um in the budget opening, and we felt that it would be easiest to handle that. Uh, within the budget opening, it'll be coming before you. And um, the state has identified additional funds that will be available to uh cover the uh overflow shelter, I think through next September. And um, those funds uh rather than use up what we've got this year and then do another budget opening last next year. We felt that it would be better to increase the budget this year to include that additional money. Then whatever's not used will be rolled over. Uh, at well, it'll be rolled over as a budget opening. So that way we'll know exactly how much is left over. So that's the only change that's occurred. And it's it makes our housekeeping a lot easier and it makes it a lot easier for C E D to track the money coming from the states.
Okay. And this is because we've gone to being finished on April thirtieth to. They've asked us to extend for one more year till next April thirtieth.
That's correct.
Kind of that fill in that wasn't there.
Yeah, and they they they've set up kind of a strange year for this. Uh, it's between the county's calendar year. It's between the city's fiscal year, and it doesn't match any of our calendars. But um, this way we'll be able to track the amount and whatever's left over at the end of the year, you'll see is in budget opening next year to make sure that we are are uh spending every one of those dollars that comes in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any questions from the council on that? All right. Thank you so much. All right. And um, then we also added an item regarding our performing arts theater. I'll turn the time over to, well, do you want to address it now or later in the?
Oh, I I can. I think it's the next one up, right? If you'd like, if you like that.
Yep. That'll be great.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As we mentioned last last meeting, we'll be bringing a resolution forward. Uh, we've been in discussion with the current leadership of the Performing Arts Theater uh for some time now. Ever since the announcement of the closure, we've had conversations and have been meeting uh crafting a proposal to come to the council. What this resolution does is it commits us to working together with them and coming up with that agreement, but allowing them to transition into a community-based theater, which would separate them from the city, but also commit to enter into an agreement that would provide subsidy for at least up to uh December of twenty twenty five. Do you even speak louder? So this is the resolution. We wanted to bring it forward so that we can all be working in good faith, that they could be working um and starting to to find ways to to make this sustainable, more sustainable. But this this resolution will mark the the commitment by the city, both the city and the Performing Arts Theater, to work together to that so for that solution. At a later date, we'll be be bringing the details of the subsidy and just all the details that will come with an agreement like that. It'll take probably a couple of months to to get that together. Uh, I don't know. Appreciate our city attorney and um getting this resolution put together in a timely manner. And if there's anything else you'd like to add. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to our R D A meeting for this evening. Are there any questions from the chair of that board for tonight's meeting? Everything's good?
We're good to go.
Okay, housing authority.
Good.
Okay, and building authority.
Yeah.
All right. No adjustments? All good? All right, we'll now go to Resolution twenty four dash ninety seven. Um, turn the time to Mr. Patch Streak for an amendment number one to an agreement with the Department of Workforce Services.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Past, Community Development Director. So uh, Mr. Welch uh alluded to this uh earlier. So our original contract with the state ran until the end of April, but then as a council knows, the state decided to keep the shelter open longer. And so this um this amendment to our agreement with the state would extend the contract through the end of September of this year. Uh, although the state is looking to uh keep the shelter open through April. So essentially what will happen is uh we will either amend this contract again or have a new contract that would take us through April. So they chose to uh do it through September while they figure out kind of all of the solutions for uh winter overflow in the county. And our original contract amount was for uh just under four hundred and nine thousand dollars. This amendment would add uh three hundred and forty five thousand and change uh to the original contract. And again, the idea would be that this uh these additional funds would uh pay for the overtime expense from our police and fire to service the shelter as well as calls immediately around the shelter that kind of or that are associated with the shelter.
Okay. Any questions for the from the council for Mr. Pastrick?
On the timing, um, so the intent is to to go through the end of April, even though this says right now it's September.
Right.
But they're just working it. So I, you know, at one point that was probably.
So uh, great question. I mean, we 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 had hoped to have this sooner, but we were waiting uh for the contract with the state. Given the um the timing up to this point, my guess is I'll see the contract probably in October, once this one's over. Uh, just from the state, but that's just kind of how the timings worked out within.
Because they're trying to have a plan ready for cog by April first, I mean, March? No, let's go to the real world. August first, correct? Okay.
So I think at that point, once they they have a plan for the winter beds, then that's when they plan on contracting with all the different locations and we would be included in that.
Okay. Seeing no other questions.
So I'm just still trying to understand. Is this set to close in September?
No. This is just, I think for their budgeting purposes, they just have to do this fill gap, gap filled contract, and then they'll do the real one from October to the end of April of twenty five.
Correct. That's right.
So this temporary shelter is set to close in April of twenty five.
Correct. And we'll have we'll have a either another amendment or a new contract that takes us from Sep from the from October one through the end of April.
Good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, uh, we'll now ask Chief Evans to come up. We have a purchase of a mobile emergency operations center trailer.
Good afternoon. Um, what's before you is um, a few months ago, we talked about Federal Emergency Management Agency awarded West Valley City a little over a million dollars to purchase uh Mobile Emergency Operations Center. Our part of it was the two hundred thousand. What's before you is the actual trailer itself. Um, there are some drawings in there. You can see what um that unit will look like. It is. It is expensive. I don't think anything I bring to you is not expensive. I mean, even to say. It's what I was gonna say. Guess I'd be to it. Um, so this unit is the eight hundred and sixty two thousand. Um, that will be paid for with with the grant. Uh, the reason we're bringing this to you is two reasons. The price increase um that is going to happen in July from that company. Uh, wanted to try to get it before that. And as you can see with everything else, even if we order it, it's about nineteen to twenty months out. We're almost two years before it'll be delivered. Our part is going to be the tractor that pulls it, which we've already talked about in in the budget. That will be our portion of this unit.
We we already have a a mobile unit, right? I think we toured it last summer.
Yes.
What what's the plan for that?
We'll sell it. One one of the things we found out, it it was a good stopgap, but it's really small for what we need. You can see this one uh has four slide outs with conference rooms and workstations inside of it. Everything's self-contained. So we will probably, we we will be selling the other unit.
Does the cost of this include all the fitting? Is it already ready to go?
Yes. Let me take that back. There are a few things that we will take out of the old one. Um, and I'll just give you a hint, like a plot or some things like that that we'll take out of the old one and put in this one. But for the most part, everything's there, all the all the big screens that you see in the drawings, everything that's coming with the unit.
And the old one, it's small, but it's got life. So another inactivity, not interested.
Mm-hmm. Yes. This will be probably this will probably be the only unit in the state that is like this. Um, really don't know how we got the grant, because FEMA usually does not do not uh uh do mobile units. They do fixed facilities, but this was a year and a half ago we did this. The other reason we want to get it now is the grant. We do have some stipulations on how quick the grant has to be expanded.
The grant had to be used for a mobile U O C or?
Yes. Or the money has to go back.
And that's how it was applied for, correct?
That's how.
More specific use.
This this what you have in front of you is what we asked for in the grant.
Awesome.
May we never need it?
What's that?
May we never need it?
Yes, I would.
Yeah. I'm sure. We all.
It'd be nice just to be mothballed, but.
Yeah.
I think it'll be used.
Well, and I think mobile, especially for our area with earthquakes and such, makes more sense than a fixed building that's well, be at the center.
Yeah. I mean, the last earth earthquake we had, um, the U O C was rendered useless. That's why we we brought out everything we did. And it's at that point in time, that's when we finally fi- figured out we need something different than what we have. And that's when we put in for the grant was probably a year after that earthquake.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll now go to Ms. Young with the Parks Department for construction of the Westview Park Expansion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. So uh, what we have today is a an issue paper and resolution to award a contract to do the construction of the Westview Park Expansion. We solicited bids. We got uh three different bids back, as you can see. As you may remember, about a year ago, we brought to you the challenge course for the Westview Park, and it was the recommendation of council to include the parking lot with that. So this includes the parking lot. Um, there will be a phase two down the road that will include um a multi-use court, um as you can see by the image, as well as some uh some grass space and restrooms, but that will be a project down the road. So this does include the the playground or the parking lot area and the challenge course. The challenge course has already been approved. Uh, we will be coming back with the installation cost of the of the challenge course. Uh, this cost does not include utility hookups, which are being paid separately. Um, I know we had, I believe it was Rocky Mountain Power a few weeks ago. Um, it would be probably good at some point if we just brought them all to you at the same time instead of uh onesie twosie, but uh to award the the contract to staff construction. Uh, they're also doing some work. We've worked with Public Works and they want to get the uh the curb and gutter and uh park strip done to be up to what the standard is for Public Works. And so um part of the total cost of the project will be paid by Public Works, but the six hundred and just over six hundred thousand will be paid out of park impact fees for the expansion. And then Public Works will pay about the other seventy thousand out of stormwater money.
Okay. Any questions?
So the rendering has the parking as phase two, but you were just saying that it's.
It is. It's part of this phase of the recommendation of council. When we when we brought the challenge course, you you wanted that included in this phase, so that the parking or the parking lot will be, but the restrooms and multi-use court and the grass space further further east um adjacent to the Mountain Corridor will be phase two.
This is vendor one that's um that you've contracted before.
We have. We've done a lot of work with them. Public Works has used them, and we've used them. They actually uh did our skate park a few years ago. We've done quite a bit of work with them as a city.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, well, now move to Resolution twenty four dash one hundred. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick. This is to authorize the mayor to sign a local agreement and understanding and agreement for consulting services.
Thank you, Mayor. So in Utah code, uh cities that have light rail stations are required to have what what's called the station area plan. So it's a plan around uh the half mile surrounding each uh track station. And those plans uh have to be uh adopted by the end of twenty twenty five. So this is one of those instances where the state actually funded a mandate uh and provided funds. So we applied for funding through Waseh Front and were awarded funding, which is actually uh the funding is managed by Waseh Front. So the contract is between Waseh Front and the the consultant that was chosen, W S P. And then the the city is a party in that uh we are uh reviewing their work and also providing support to the consultant. And we include a a statement in there that we would uh work in earnest to essentially review the the final product and and work to adopt that as part of the city's general plan. So really is uh to to bring us into compliance with uh that requirement in state code by the deadline of the end of next year.
And was that legislation passed in twenty two or twenty three or twenty four?
I believe it was it was e- either twenty two or twenty three. It's it wasn't last year. It's been a couple of years now.
Okay. And this just puts it in our general plan. It's up to a private entity to come in and actually want to do the development?
Correct, right. So this is just the 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 work to be done here is to actually come up with the plan for each of the three areas. So we have, there's the, this would cover the station by the river, the one just west of Redwood Road, and then the one by the Maverick Center. And then we have the plan here by City Hall. So this would uh, the consultant would work with us to create the plans. Those would then be adopted by the council and then become part of the city's general plan.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Pastrick?
I have a question on the River Trail Station. That radius extends into South Salt Lake.
Right.
Are they required to collaborate with this or do we just, because it's in our city, the station? We create the plan.
So we, in in our proposal, we basically said we would have planned for what's in our city. And and that in that situation, there's really no connection, right? There's no roads that go over to that side. And uh, you know, aside from the the light rail actually crossing over the river, so there's not really a lot of crossover that way because there's not that connectivity. Uh, we did say, we'll we'll discuss it with South Salt Lake, but as far as the plan is concerned, we'll just worry about what's what's in our city.
It's very industrial.
Right, it's it's a lot of that area is already developed.
Steve, I might say, I just got information from my U T A source that originally that the half mile came from the feds, so they would build tracks, so could build tracks. So.
So thank you for that.
No problems.
Okay, seeing no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to our communications. We'll turn the time over to Ms. Kamic for a rank choice voting update.
Yes, and I believe Travis is gonna help me up and pull up the presentation, because it gets a little bit weird on my laptop here. Um, so I believe it was Councilman Fitzie Amanu who requested an update on rank choice voting a little while back, so I just wanted to provide just a brief update. Um, and if you could go to the next slide, Travis. Okay, so as you know, ranked choice voting was passed into law um as a pilot project in twenty eighteen. Uh, the pilot project is currently planned to end in twenty twenty six. Um, there were discussions during this last legislative session that centered around ending the pilot project uh period early. Um, but that bill did end up failing um narrowly in the Senate. Um, the current deadline for participation in the twenty twenty five election is May first. So the council has some time to consider and discuss this down the road a bit. Um, and then next slide, please. So I think everyone here has a good understanding of what ranked choice voting is. I won't spend too much time on this. Um, but essentially voters are given um an opportunity to rank candidates in the order of their choice. All first round votes are counted, and if a candidate receives more than fifty percent, that candidate is declared a winner. Uh, however, if no candidate receives over fifty percent in the first round, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated, and a few, a new round of voting is conducted with second choice options until um someone gets over that fifty percent majority. Um, that's just basically how it works. I have a little video in there if you want to see kind of a live rundown, but I think I've showed that before, so. Um, if we could just go to the next slide. So I just wanted to do a comparison. So in twenty twenty one, there were a total of twenty three municipalities throughout the state that participated. Um, next slide, please. And then that dropped to twelve in twenty twenty three. If you could go to the next slide. Um, so I just reached out to uh to the cities who participated just to see if I could get an understanding of what they liked or what they didn't like about the process. Um, so this first one is feedback from those who participated in both twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three. And overall, these municipalities had a a positive experience. Um, Heber Council is very supportive of the process despite some opposition from the community. Lehigh residents were a little more supportive in twenty twenty one than twenty twenty three, and Lehigh is actually the only municipality to hold a primary rank or ranked choice voting, which is interesting. They're the only one that have done that. When I asked them kind of why the council decided to do that, um, they just said that they were concerned about the length of the ballot. They didn't want to deter residents um to have to research more than ten candidates. Um, they were afraid that it would, like, the length would just kind of make people a little bit more hesitant to participate. And they wanted it to be a little bit shorter at the general election.
So how many people?
So.
On the original.
What's interesting is in Utah County, they're all at-large positions. Two of their um incumbents um chose not to run, so they anticipated that there would be a lot of interest. So that's why they chose to go with ranked choice voting. But again, they were afraid that because there may be a significant interest, it would be a really large ballot with a lot of candidates. I believe they ended up with maybe sixteen or seventeen. So it it was quite lengthy.
And then during the primary, they narrowed it down.
They narrowed it down to six. Yeah, so it was actually, I think it was twelve candidates, and then they narrowed it down. Yeah, sixteen. There we go. Thank you. Yes. So it was interesting. They're the only ones that have done that. Um, I think one of the selling points of ranked choice voting is is the cost savings. So in that scenario, there there wasn't really, since they still had to run two. Um, but that was just an interesting thing that I learned. Um, so this slide is feedback from those who participated in twenty twenty one but chose not to in twenty twenty three. Um, it said that, let's see. Um, a lot of the same reasons were mentioned when I asked each of these municipalities. They said that the council and residents just felt like the process was confusing. Um, there was just difficulty with the process in general, and that's kind of more specific to Draper and Sandy, who just had that difficult recount process that made them just avoid uh doing that again in twenty twenty three. Um, and then a a few of them said that despite spending money on education, it just voters were still confused or just generally prefer traditional voting processes. So, yeah, there's some, there's some that love it, some that just don't. Um, but yeah, if you could go to the next slide. So I just kind of wanted to show how things went specifically in each city. So Salt Lake County had six municipalities who participated. Um, if you can see, though, that three of those didn't have enough candidates for ranked choice voting to come into effect. That's uh Mill Creek, South Salt Lake, or let's see. South Salt Lake, Kearns, and Magna. So they just didn't have enough candidates for it to even have to go through that process. Mill Creek uh did have three candidates, but the first. Mill Creek did have three candidates, but the first place candidate won in the first round, so it didn't have to go to any other rounds. And then it's, Midville had three races with one that required a second round, so it went through one round. Salt Lake had five races with three that did not need ranked choice voting and two that went two rounds. And then this last side, this is Utah County, and then Heber City and Weber County, they do tend to go more rounds than, than ones in Salt Lake County. And ranked choice voting comes into play a lot more often, it's tough to compare us to these, like I said earlier. They, they have at-large positions, so let's say they have three positions that are up. They don't go by district, so if you have ten candidates that sign up, they essentially have three opportunities to, to be elected. So it just looked a little different from our city, a little tougher to compare, but, yeah, they they have, they have that experience, so that's kind of all I had, just kind of stats on, on how things are looking. I can answer any questions if the council has any.
So the, the pilot period ends in twenty twenty six. Is there a plan going forward?
There's a lot of discussion. I would say it, it's hard to say right now, after twenty twenty six, I would think that that conversation will probably come next year at the legislative session. Like I said, there was a bill this last year where they were proposing to end it early, it failed, so.
But it was close, right?
Yeah, it was a close vote, so it's, it's really hard to say where it's going. But for now, it, it's planned to end in twenty twenty six, the pilot program.
So the election department probably has a budget. So with no primaries, would our general election just cost more to cover their budget? Are we really gonna see a big price or cost savings? Because they still need the same amount of money to run their department, don't they?
Right, so that was another issue that we came across, which, if you recall, we ended up paying significantly more for our, our election services this last year, and that was due to the county just kind of underestimating the costs of traditional versus ranked choice, and also just a general cost increase and everything. So right now, I don't know, but I get those contracts at the beginning of the year, so I'll be able to see hopefully a more accurate representation of what traditional will cost us versus what a ranked choice may cost us in the next year.
So they anticipated ranked choice would cost less and it didn't?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Just given the whole pot of things, they just didn't calculate you know, X amount of cities are participating, participating in traditional, X amount of cities are participating in, yeah. So it was just kind of, it was the first year that there was this kind of
The mailing cost, of course.
Yes, yeah, that was a huge, that was a huge part of it, just general increase in, in costs. So it's hard to say what, what affected what with this last one, but they're striving to, to have a more accurate for the next one, yeah, it, it is, is, it is in theory less expensive, just given the lack of primary, however, the ballots are sometimes longer and larger, so cost of postage is more expensive, it just.
And then it doesn't like each round you have to do takes more time and more manpower and costs more.
Yeah, I would think, yeah, okay.
I think it's just a computer, though.
I think, yeah.
That, that count.
They had the recount stuff.
The accounts, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Get more a little complicated, that's where there were issues, but yeah.
Well, it'll be interesting to see if it goes back up where half decided not to do it again.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I did ask, you know, those that have participated, if, if they know if their council is interested in participating again in twenty twenty five, and they all pretty much just said it's a little too early to, to know whether we're doing that yet or not, so I didn't really get a definitive answer from anyone. Salt Lake consistently has been pretty supportive of it in general, but.
Well, I appreciate their vote, that was just kind of what I was, this is precisely what I was hoping to be able to consider, I just think it is interesting that there's maybe the line of, of or the dividing line between the pros and cons are really folks who are I guess it comes down to familiarity, and so if you look at it, both of the major parties have been using ranked choice voting and continue to for, you know, to choose local officials for, for years at this point. But whereas maybe those that don't attend local caucuses or conventions, it is new, right, and it is different.
There's definitely nationwide conversations around ranked choice voting as well, it's not just here in Epa. I believe Mr. Peely had some experience with that in, in New Mexico as well, so.
Good info.
Yeah, absolutely. But I, I should get those contracts. Usually it's, it's February-ish, so I'll have a, I'll have that information before you, you as a council will need to make that decision for the coming election cycle.
I think that ranked choice voting is a great way to go. But if, if the legislature decides not to do it the following year, I don't, it's, it's only worth it if we can start teaching people and they get used to it over, over time. If, I would definitely not want to do it if it's gonna be one year and.
And I think there's also a little bit of, you know, the state doesn't do it right now, and so you kind of go back and forth, so you know, one year you're doing it, the next year your municipality isn't, so a lot of people are like, wait, what are we doing? Are we doing traditional? Are we doing ranked? Because it lies within, you know, a municipal cycle is different from the state's cycle, so.
Yeah, there will be a primary next year for, for other processes. And so people will be like, how come there's not, you know, I didn't see your name on it?
Yeah.
But I, I just worry about the confusion, you know, people not knowing, oh, I can, I can rank these, I don't have to pick one, or, you know.
Yeah, and that's kind of the, the sentiment that those that chose not to just said their voters just kind of came and said, I don't really understand this, you know, I voted for this person, just, they just didn't understand the process, and that's, that's an educational, you know, part of what would need to happen, but again, with you know, going back and forth between years, state municipal, state municipal, it just I think a lot of people were just kind of like what are we doing?
Personally, looking at the numbers, we have such a low order turnout, I would hate to give them another obstacle that makes it even lower turnout, I'd rather have
Some of the cities, though, reported a higher turnout because of ranked, and maybe that wasn't because of ranked choice.
Might have been there, with you back here. Yeah.
Yeah, so the caucus convention and local stuff, I mean, it almost makes it easier to talk about it, because it's not just you or you. It's, I like you both, you know, and I actually put you as my second choice, you, it's an easy out for voters to be able to, to talk to each other civilly, as well, but, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, at the party level and, you know, convention level, you know, nobody wants to go back to traditional voting on, in the Republican or the Democrats side, but the average voter who's not used to that, it, it can be confusing.
There's definite pros and cons, I, I think to each swing.
So I guess timeline, I should have paid attention, but timeline then, should we, should this look like the state will pick this up where other cities might be interested? What's our timeline here?
So for the twenty twenty five election, it would be May first, the council would have up until that date to pass a resolution that says that, that the council wants to participate in ranked choice voting. There, I, I would assume that there's going to be discussions at the legislative session next year regarding it, given that the pilot program ends in twenty twenty six. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely know more about the future of the program at that time. But yes.
Seeing no other questions, thank you. All right, council calendar, any issues or concerns? Everybody's got the parade blocked out, so they'll all be there?
I will not be there.
Will not be there, okay.
I could miss my son's wedding, but I better go.
It doesn't need you.
Yeah.
We could do it on a float.
I would get some coverage.
You can get the whole wedding party to follow.
Have a much bigger, bigger parade. Okay. We'll move on to our potential future agenda items, did anyone have anything? Council reports. I went to the My Home Town recital last Thursday. And going as often as I do, you watch how much better they're getting each time, and the level of performance they give, and they are really making great progress. And the parents are taking the lessons as well as the kids, and watching the parents just it was fun to watch how proud they were that they could play that really hard song, so they're great to go to, and it's been really fun, I think it's just such a great program for people that very happy with that, so if you have time, you should try to go to one. Anybody else? Nobody else, hey? Do we have a need for a closed session tonight?
No.
No? Nope. And we just have one more matter of business. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned, see you at six thirty in the other room.